Good evening and welcome to the Millbrae City Council Meeting of April 25th, 2017. Can we have a roll call, please?
All council members are present.
Thank you. Will you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is a proclamation proclaiming the month of May 2017 as Older Americans Month. And I see Marlene McBride from the Senior Advisory Committee is here. And we have some other commissioners who are here as well. So if we can all please join me at the podium.
I'm not sure that Mayor's qualified for this question.
We should all be so lucky.
Come on up.
Come on up.
I know.
Okay. Whereas in 1963, President John F. Kennedy designated the month of May as Senior Citizens' Month, and in 1980, President Jimmy Carter re-designated May as Older Americans Month. And whereas in the city of Millbrae, our older adults are the root from which our community grows, who bestow gifts of wisdom and insight upon our younger generations, and strengthen the bonds between neighbors to help create a better place to live. And whereas, Millbrae's older adults remain strong and active for longer than ever before, and should be commended for their role in dedicating their time and energy to our city by selfless hard work, thereby creating and bolstering the fiber of our community. And whereas, the 2017 theme for Older Americans Month is Age Out Loud, to give aging a new voice, one that reflects what today's older adults have to say. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Older Americans Month, and encourage all residents in our community to celebrate and recognize our older Americans. So, thank you.
Thank you for your service to our community.
I have to mention...
Yes, go ahead.
We're very privileged because the proclamations that they had hanging in the senior, the rec center were all burned, so this will be one that we'll treasure. Thank you so much.
We'll take the picture for you.
Mimi.
Hey, Mimi.
Thank you.
Oh, the job of Vice Mayor, it's tough.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Peninsula Healthcare District Executive Director Cheryl Fama regarding the San Mateo County Local Agency Formation District Review. So, Cheryl?
Thank you so much for the invitation to address you today. I appreciate following the older American awareness, and I feel that I'm qualified to get up and stand before you today. I'm really here for two reasons. One is for the opportunity to inform you about a process that goes along around, or goes on in our state and should very definitely, that maybe most of us don't know about. And the second, in the spirit of kind of our new order in America, to kind of a call to engagement and a call to action. And I just want to make you aware of the Local Agency Formation Commission, which is tasked with doing reviews of cities and special district and municipalities on a periodic basis. So what I want to do is inform you about our LAFCO review, let you know what is LAFCO, what are they going to review, and why would I think you'd want to know, if you don't mind. So, LAFCOs are independent commissions with jurisdiction over the boundaries of, in San Mateo County, they cover the entire county of San Mateo, they cover 20 cities, 22 independent special districts. And independent special districts, if you look on your property tax bill, up on the 1%, we get funding out of the special districts, 1%. 22%, excuse me, 22 districts are everything from sewer to water to mosquito abatement to healthcare. There are two special districts in San Mateo County, Sequoia, in the south part of the county, and Peninsula, right here in Burlingame. The LAFCOs need to have, they have jurisdiction over them, and they have to do periodic reviews. In our case, and they're going to look at things like financial management, services, are we, is our work consistent with our legislative mandate? Are we accountable to our taxpayers? Are we transparent? Is there good governance in place? Our review process, actually, we were formed in 1947, LAFCOs were formed in 1964, and the guideline is every five years to have a review. Our last review and our only previous review is in 2007. So we're embarking on our second review this year. Our process started last October with a self-survey, which was probably 30 pages long. In December and January, we probably downloaded something like, oh, 5,000 pages of documents, everything from board minutes to committee structures to financial information to documentation as to how do we stay connected with the needs of our community. An administrative draft of the report was issued in March, which I had a chance to add some reviews and edits. And then the circulation draft was distributed in April. Now is the window of time for input. Last Thursday was a public session, so I'm here kind of a little bit late, but not too too late. The public session was held at San Mateo City Hall, and was open for any interested parties, any interested parties in the county who wanted to say, hey, they're not doing this, or we don't know what they're doing, or, you know, we think they're doing a great job, whatever is that individual's perspective. All of that feedback from April 20th, along with any written letters or comments that come in by snail mail, email, will be incorporated then into the final draft, which will be published in early May. And then we'll go to the Local Agency Formation Commission, which is a county commission. Two members of the Board of Supervisors serve on that, Dawn Horsley and Warren Slocum. And then you have two representatives from special districts, I think another from a city, a public member at large, and they will hear the report. Again, May 20th, at the Supervisors' Chambers, at 2:00, will be another public hearing. So what are they really going to look for? Well, as I mentioned earlier, well, let me tell you about healthcare districts. What's a healthcare district first? Because, you know, I've had the pleasure of being in healthcare, and I'm going to confess this just to underscore, I can say that I'm an older American, but I actually started in healthcare in May of 1968. So I'm coming up on my 50th year of being in the biz. And it's changed. It's changed over that time. But I didn't even know really what a healthcare district was until I took this job. So I never get offended if people don't quite get it. So I'm going to try to give you the elevator pitch, but please know, it's more complicated than that. But there are 78 healthcare districts in the state of California. They were created by 1946 legislation that gave to the residents of a community a funding mechanism by which they could vote to create a district, would then give them a funding mechanism to build and operate hospitals. So that was our origin. In 1994, as healthcare changed, so did the scope, if you will, of healthcare districts. We no longer were hospital districts, we were healthcare districts. And then we were looking at these, the health of a community in a divine, a defined area with specific boundaries. And our mandate, simply stated and as broadly stated, is one thing, to address the health of our community. So among the state 78 districts, that could be everything from a nursing home, a gym, an ambulance service, an acute care hospital, et cetera. Peninsula and Sequoia Healthcare Districts are the two in the county, as I mentioned. We, our boundaries were drawn in 1946 and 1947, and they've never changed. So a question we often get asked is, well, if you cover, we cover a little bit of South City, all the way down through half of Foster City along the bay, and Sequoia handles everything from Foster City down further. But the way the boundaries are drawn, nobody covers South City and Daly City, nobody covers the coast side, and even some of the greatest need in the East Palo Alto area falls outside of the current boundaries. So to the question, how come you don't serve that? It's because when the boundaries were drawn, that's what was drawn. It's never changed since then, and maybe that will be something that will come out of this review. We cover about a third each. So it's, the Peninsula Healthcare District covers approximately 200,000 residents, so does Sequoia, and that leaves about a third of the county uncovered. So what are they looking for? I mentioned before, financial management, accountability, governance. The report is available online, and I have some materials that I handed out that is an announcement from LAFCO that tells you about the April 20th meeting gone, gives you a link to, and any of you in the audience, if you just go on to the website, which is simply samateolafco.org, you'll be able to see the entire report. Where was I going here? It is online for review. It's over 80 pages. It's over 80 pages, so it's not light reading. And the key areas that they're going to be looking for, and I know this both from the LAFCO directives and what they've been asking, as well as at the state level. They're going to be looking for, are we duplicating services? Are districts just doing things to look like we have something from purpose? Do we eliminate, do we collaborate with other providers? Or are we kind of standalone in our duplication and not communicating? Do we seek to promote best practices? Do we learn from one another? If we were formed to run hospitals, and we don't run a hospital anymore, why should we exist? And in all candor to all of you, when I say we get a small portion of your property tax for us, that, when I started 10 years ago, that was about $3 million, and now it's close to $6 million. So we get about $6 million of your taxpayer dollars every year, and I would want you to know that. If all we do is basically write grants for other organizations, should we exist? Are you a foundation, or are you, should you be addressing the health needs? And so how do you do that? They're going to be looking for that. There's also, there's also critics to those questions that say, wait a minute, we don't need to be hospital districts anymore. Health used to be hospital-related. Then it was healthcare-related, and now it's community health-related. And I say that, and I use my age to say, I've seen the trend, I've seen the transition. It's true. 90% of healthcare and health and preventing illnesses in the community, it's not in the hospital. God bless the hospital that we have it. One question that, just to touch on, what's the relationship between the Peninsula Healthcare District and the Peninsula Hospital? We built it, and we ran the original hospital till 1985. We brought in folks far smarter than ourselves to run it in 1985, then when the decision was, somebody has to build a brand-new hospital who's going to do it. Through many years of what I have been told, rather difficult negotiations, it was decided. And to my board's credit, they kept the hospital on this land, and Sutter built that new hospital at no cost to the taxpayer. And I think that that's really something, when we drive by that big building, all $70 million of that construction, it was either going to fall on the district to have to come up with bond money to build a new hospital, or close a hospital, or come up with a mechanism to keep that service on the Mid Peninsula. And that's what your healthcare district board did for you back in 2005 and 2006. So today, we have a very collaborative, very close relationship on what's going on in healthcare, how can the district services help you? And in our major projects, as you know, we have some development projects going on. Both our assisted living building is going up at the corner of Magnolia and Truesdale. We have eight acres behind the hospital to the west that we're looking at developing a Peninsula Wellness Community of housing and services and state-of-the-art equipment, as well as future programs and services and partnerships. But what have we done for you lately in Millbrae? How would you know we ever existed? Well, hopefully, if we just do it quietly, you wouldn't. We don't do it to get a lot of pat on the shoulder. We contribute to a wider, wide range of city events. We're active in the Art and Wine Festival, giving out information. We support the Japanese cultural event Relay for Life, the school walkathons. We have Girl Scout and Brownie meetings in our building. We have the Millbrae Community Foundation meets in our office. And we've also done some bigger things. We put some AEDs now in the high schools throughout our district. We have launched a new teen mental health project for three years in our district in partnership with the school district in Stanford. We did three years of funding for the Healthy Schools Initiative and helped put nurses in. We helped sponsor Health Week. So we're trying to be out there to promote health in the community, and that's what we've done. So, LAFCO's coming to review, that's their job. It's the first time we've been reviewed in 10 years, and we're, I am embracing the opportunity. See, I'm looking at Marcia, she's going to be sorry, she gave me a chance to be at the microphone. But I really appreciate the opportunity to make you aware of a healthcare district. We have five elected board members. You vote for them, they are accountable to you. I am accountable to you. So I wanted to give every opportunity, we've got some extra copies, I think, of our annual report. I have a copy up there also with, you know, who to contact and where to send any kind of a letter that you may want to send. And we meet here. We alternate our board meetings from this City Hall to Burlingame City Hall. We'll be here at our board meeting on Thursday at 6:30. So please, know that somebody's keeping an eye on us, and we welcome it. Know that I have many stories to tell about what's going on, and always appreciate the opportunity, and encourage you that if you want to know more, to contact me. And if you know of anything that's been done or has helped in your community you think is noteworthy to share with the LAFCO, then I encourage you to do so. So with that, I will stop and then be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Cheryl. I think we all appreciate the hard work that you and your agency does on behalf of public health here on the Peninsula. Any questions from the council? Oh, yes, Councilman Aliva?
Just curious. With regards to homelessness, that's a healthcare issue. Is there anything that our, your foundation would do? And also the opioid, opioid epidemic, that's kind of hard to say. Is there anything that's being proactive in that subject matter?
Yes, in the county, and not specifically in the district. And not because I don't think we don't have an occasional problem there, but it's not as, it is not as much of a health priority right in our boundaries. But we collaborate with, and we sit on the Healthy San Mateo Collaborative. And opioids and the whole rollout of legal marijuana is a very big topic right now for all of us, not only from law enforcement, but for the recognizing what's going on in Colorado relative to deaths, injuries, children under five getting access to THC and what have you. So we are all gearing up for the what-ifs, and that's how the healthcare district works with that. It may rise to the top in terms of a priority. Annually, we look at the needs assessments, and right now, we're focusing primarily on obesity, diabetes, risk reduction behavior, especially in teenagers, as well as senior activities to keep people healthy and active, and so those are really where we're focusing, but not to the exclusion of what the other needs are.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pappin?
Hello. Thank you again for the update and all the hard work you guys do. And we look forward to working with you as we develop a new community center, because health is going to be a big part of that. And we're going to be looking at the programs that we had before, and possibly incorporating some of the programs you have now, so that we can be a benefit to the entire community there. But we greatly appreciate all that, and what was mentioned about the opioid and the new marijuana law, too. I know that there will be an increased impact on mental health, because that seems to be a trigger for some people. So we want the county and everyone prepared for that. Public safety is going to be key here. So we look forward to working with the healthcare district and you as we move forward here. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much, Cheryl, and we look forward to the results from LAFCO.
Okay.
All right. I'm going to go slightly out of order here, but at the end of the last presentation regarding Older Americans Month, we did get a speaker slip that came in just as Cheryl was about to speak. So, Wynne Gershich, have a comment on that presentation?
Now that I've become a senior citizen, I'm more aware of these things, too. So, one of the things that I wanted to talk about is the fact that we do not have enough hospitals for bedridden seniors. My dad has blood cancer, he's 88, and we had to move him to Petaluma, and we're trying to move him down to the Bay Area, because it's too far to go see him. And on the other side of the bay, Hayward just closed down a hospital with 136 patients, and they have to move them. And the few skilled nursing facilities that take bedridden seniors are, there aren't any, there aren't enough to take care of the population that has this problem. And secondly, they have a waiting list on every one of these facilities, these skilled nursing facilities, like a list of 100 people. So every day, they get phone calls waiting for somebody to die to move somebody in. So you can't move your family. And this is something that is really, really important. And also, too, Dr. Wynne Parker has been talking about this on the radio, that under the Obamacare plan, there was a doctor that says that he didn't want to live past 75. And what they're trying to do, too, is not to have healthcare for anybody over 75. So everybody needs to be checking this out. And secondly, too, about this, what we need to do is to do something for these seniors, because what they're saying in Hayward, what they're going to do is put them in a regular hospital. So if you're putting these bedridden seniors, because you have no place to put them, you can't throw them out on the street, and they're taking up room in a hospital, if you need surgery or something, or have a major accident, there's not going to be room for you. And this is why, this is a very, very important issue, the fact that we've got to have skilled nursing facilities for bedridden seniors that can't move and need hoyer list to be pulled out, and somebody to change their diapers, and we don't have enough of these. And most of all, the seniors should be really, I admire the people that are older, because they are politically active, and they're really with the harp and everything that they go through. We're going to run out of Social Security, because what we're facing in the near future, we're going to have a lot of seniors that are going to be broke, because they claim they're going to reduce our Social Security payments one-third. And that's only in a few years to come. So when you see what's happening, because this country is not being run very well, and what's happened to Social Security, that our seniors are, it is a priority. You've got to figure out what you're going to do, because you can't throw these old people out on the street when they can't pay their rent, and they can't pay for their medicine and anything else. And what society would do that? So I hope that our seniors are very active in trying to fix some of this. But most of all, I really want to see some skilled nursing facilities and put that on your agenda.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from Caltrans regarding El Camino safety, El Camino Real safety issues. And I see someone who's not from Caltrans, but our chief, Roger Copeland?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Hollibur and Vice Mayor Pappin, members of the City Council. I'm here briefly, actually, just to introduce a member of Caltrans here, and I want to briefly explain why he's here. The city of Millbrae has public safety issues, and one of those issues that I'd like to address council tonight is the pedestrian safety along the El Camino Real corridor. It's no secret that it could be dangerous to cross the street on El Camino Real, and there's been several cases of pedestrians that have been struck by vehicles. And I'm not going to run over a, pardon the pun, a bunch of stats on that, but I will tell you, within the last 10 years, there has been four pedestrian accidents just at Ludeman Lane alone, and two of those resulted in fatalities. So something needs to be done, and fortunately, Caltrans, because El Camino Real is a state route highway, as you know, and they have a plan in place to make improvements, and part of that plan involves improvement along the El Camino Corridor in Millbrae. And I'd like to introduce June Kang, who will go over that briefly and let you know what they have planned for that.
My name is June Kang from Caltrans. Thank you for inviting me to speak about the project that's going on right now in El Camino Real. We have district-wide safety improvement projects going on for the crosswalk safety improvements, and this is one of them. San Mateo County Crosswalk Safety Improvement Project, we have a little identifier number that's going on right now that started construction last year. Let's see, that's not the right one. Here we go. Sorry. Oops. Gotcha. All right. We're going to quickly go over our project scope, project footprint and schedule, and we're going to talk about the, what's going on in the city of Millbrae. And we're going to show you location, existing roadway features, improvements we're going to be doing, and we're going to be sharing some plan sheets that construction has right now to, what kind of stuff is going to go in there. Project's scope is to install regulatory signs and warning signs, and flash beacons, hybrid, pedestrian hybrid beacons, sometimes called a HOCC system, high-intensity activated crosswalk beacon, and then crosswalk lighting, curb extension, we usually call them bulb outs, ADA curb ramps, refuge islands and raised median, and thermoplastic crosswalk markings to clarify the location of the crossings. And these are some of the examples, ADA ramps, you've seen the yellow, you know, rippled plastic right at the curb ramps, and thermoplastic is what you see on the, on the right. It's basically a plastic type of paint that lasts a long time, and also reflective. One of the elements of the crosswalk safety involves a bulb out. Basically, it's a sidewalk extension. Basically, what it does is reduces the crossing distance, and also make pedestrian visible. As you can see on the left-hand side, the car is coming in, there's car parked, and they can't really see the pedestrians. So if you do an extension, as shown in the yellow, cars can see them, you know, visually see them a lot earlier than the top left. And this is the animation of what HOCC beacons look like. So somebody pushes the button, and the yellow light flashes, and then two red light comes on to signal the traffic to stop. And then, once time could count down, and then you can basically approach with a caution, and then it goes off. So it is only activated when pedestrian wants to cross the road. And this is basically a new thing in California, and we've been trying to install these in all the state routes. There are construction going on in Slope Boulevard right now, and along 82, and there's another project being designed at this point to install these on estate routes and throughout the entire district of Caltrans, District 4. Project Footprint is basically El Camino Real, Route 82. It's a 25-mile stretch through 11 cities, from southern portion of the Atherton to all the way to Daly City. Construction began in last September, and we're hoping to finish it by this September. So you probably saw a lot of trenching and installing some underground piping along Millbrae, as well as, and then they're currently working, working to install some foundations for the poles that they're going to put in. But because of the rainy season, I think they stopped, and they're going to begin soon. In the city of Millbrae, basically, we are looking at five intersections, Park Boulevard and San Diego Avenue, Santa Helena Avenue, Ludeman Lane, and Taylor Boulevard and La Cruz Avenue. And this is basically... And this is basically a map. So, within the city of, limit of Milbrae. Basically, what we have in the city of Milbrae is a pretty wide El Camino Real. It's over 100 feet in all five locations, whereas other locations in Burlingame and other places, only 40 feet plus minus. So, basically, three lanes per direction, not counting the turning lanes. We have 21,000 to 34,000 vehicles per daily, so there's a lot of travel there. And we have, out of five intersections, we have four intersections with both direction left turn lane and one intersection with just one. So, we're going to be putting ADA ramps and sidewalk extension bulbouts, HAWK beacons and crosswalk lights and signs and thermoplastic. Basically, we're putting these in all the places on those intersections. Let me go ahead and pull out some plan sheets here and show you. So, this is right at Park Boulevard and San Diego. As you can see, there's a little bulping out at the sidewalk right here. It's called bulbouts. And we're going to be installing the HAWK signal facing this way for the northbound traffic and another signal at this point for the southbound traffic. And it's going to be another bulbout at this location as well. When I walked this, actually, I walked the entire stretch of the Milbrae to make sure what's been done. That was about a month ago, I think, we met with the city engineer. I'm sorry? I was still alive. I was still alive. Yeah, it was, cars were traveling very fast. Only thing they've done is again, underground trenching and installation of the handworks. They have marked every, all the sidewalks, but they have not started curb ramp job or bulbout or any foundations were installed. So, I'm assuming this is going to come in real soon. And other locations as well. Basically, five locations. I was told that La Cruz, actually, I saw a city install the beacons, pedestrian beacon here. It's a flashing yellow, but it'll be replaced by the HAWK signal that you've seen. That's it. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Pappin?
Thank you for being here. And this is very exciting because public safety is a great concern for us. My concern is, all these wonderful additions you are adding here, lighting at the crosswalks, I mean, above lighting. The voltage currently is not sufficient for the cars to see people walking in those crosswalks, no matter what we do. Can we please get some increased voltage?
We have a new lighting and every signal here, you see the little circle with the cross right there? That's a new light. And on this side as well?
That's going to help me as a driver. I mean, I get your beacon thing.
No, no. It's going to be shining on to, there's going to be actual lighting shining onto the crosswalk.
Awesome.
So, it definitely is going to be a lot more visible. The crosswalk signal will be visible and also, this line right here represents a stop bar. Basically, you better stop before then. And this is the signal that is a reinforceable signal, so you can get a ticket if you go past that.
Oh, okay. And one last question?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, no. I believe part of the traffic flow plan, Milbrae Avenue and El Camino, north going east-west, north-south and all of that, we were looking at additional turn lanes.
Well, that's something that I think I have to-
Yeah, Frank, okay, fine. You're doing a great job. We'll get elsewhere. No problem. No problem.
I mean, there's a lot of things happening on El Camino Real, not just in Milbrae, everywhere. So, I'm working with the special city of Burlingame in a task force to, what to do with those trees. You've seen, those are very safety concerns that, for the state and also for the residents. So, we are going through this process and that'll become a model for everywhere else. Caltrans attitude has changed and we are, we are changed organization now. We are, from the top down, we are told to work with local governments and we are actively, actively getting involved. That's why I'm here. I used to work in San Francisco and I'm transferred to San Mateo. Now, I'm the, one of the three project managers in San Mateo and looks like along the 82 will be mine. So, I'm here and-
So, if I might?
Yes.
Just to say a big thank you for your cooperation, interaction with the staff. We have seen a difference and we want to say thank you. And I appreciate your willingness to talk other things too and we're so excited about what you just gone over that we're going to stop there. Can't wait. Tell us what we can do to be cooperative.
Right, right. Understood.
Councilman Lee?
Thank you for your presentation and we do appreciate, you know, we've had, this is one of our top priorities, the safety in El Camino because of the fatalities and accidents on El Camino. And we have a very aging population here, a very large aging population. Can there be, like, you know, have a center pedestrian signals if somebody can press if they get stuck? Because some of these, some of our residents are very, you know, they can't get across before the signal changes.
So, the whole point is to time, to give enough time. So, that's why the flashing would occur. So, that could be changed at any time. Now, if there's a refuge island available there, we can, I can talk to construction and see if you can put another signal there, but we don't recommend people sitting and standing in the middle. Even at, you know, you have, even though there is enough room for them to stand there, it's not a good place. So, that's why the signal is designed to make sure to give enough time for people to cross. This is 100-feet crosswalk.
Yeah. And there's some people who need a little extra time.
Correct.
And they don't quite make it, so.
So, that could be adjusted as needed and it'll be discussed with the city to make sure that-
I prefer to have some sort of way that's, you know, I mean, the person who cannot get across, even if we, you know, so they can just signal, not feel, I've seen some people that are really, they're frightened to be stuck in the middle. Nobody wants to stand in the middle of the highway. And then, so the lighting, this HAWK lighting, does that stop traffic for, is it double red, is that signaling traffic to stop?
Yes. That's like red light.
Okay.
Stop sign.
Okay, great. Is there any chance you can get those flashing lights on the crosswalk, on the bottom of crosswalk too?
It's, it is a different type of, that flashing light that you're talking about is not reinforceable. It's not, it's not, it's not saying that you better, you must stop.
No, no.
This is a standard for state route. So, we don't have details to put lighting on the road. First of all, the maintenance is very difficult on those. I've seen a lot of those, there was supposed to be lights and they go out and it can't be changed out. So, again, this is overhead and with the huge lighting, so I think this is like signal light.
Okay.
But only activated by pedestrians.
Okay. And I think because this is a whole new system, are you guys putting signage to the effect that says that you must stop with a red light? Okay, that's awesome. And the other thing is that, thank you for the improvements in the lighting for the crossing. Is there going to be a light in the center, I mean, with the center of the walkway, would that be as well lit as well?
As far as I understand, there is a certain dimension that it shines upon and every light that's installed there was supposed to cover the entire crosswalk.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, because I know some of us are, you know, challenging times seen in the center. Some people wear dark clothes and it's hard to distinguish. So, the more, I mean, Victoria, not Victoria, the lighting on Millwood is very well lit, but, you know, it might be a lot of extra lights. So, we're looking at putting, encouraging lighting in the middle. So, and the other question is, I'm on the Grand Boulevard Initiative Committee, which is made up of elective officials and from all the cities that are in El Camino. Is Caltrans sending somebody there to those meetings too?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I would think so. I haven't seen anybody there lately, so maybe you can pass that on. And thanks again for coming. I really appreciate this presentation.
Councilman Schneider?
Again, thank you and I'm sure everybody will be happy once we get used to them. This is not your side of the house, the engineering side, but we have a lot of visitors to Milbrae because we're a hotel near there. And I think about the gentleman that we lost at Ludeman Lane. I believe he was from Chicago and I kept thinking he was at that hotel nearby, probably going to eat at the Pancake House. Has Caltrans ever thought about doing an outreach program to the hotels to have information for their customers to kind of know about the neighborhood? I think of how I get in trouble when I go to other cities. I usually always ask the concierge, where should I go? Where should I not walk at night? But if we could have some kind of program that reaches out to our visitors.
I think that's more of a chamber thing.
Well, I'll go ahead and definitely talk with the pedestrian bike coordinator. We have a pedestrian bike coordinator.
Because he was definitely a visitor who I believe had just gotten into town and probably went to get something to eat, could have been jet lagged. You know, we just don't want any more of those. The other place where I've seen, it's not at a corner, so I appreciate all the corner work, but I've had, I've seen someone get hit on the east side of El Camino right at Taco Bell. And my guess is that they walked through the middle of the block, over the planting strip there and got hit. And then I've had people kind of appear almost out of it where thankfully I was going slow enough. Is there anything, and not for this time, but for the next time, to think about what we can do to stop people from crossing over the planted mediums? And I'm thinking where the redwood trees are because it's, they can really kind of pop out from a tree. So, I'm just throwing that out there. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I was actually going to say something similar that on, you know, this is something we discussed a few meetings ago when we were talking about our specific plan, the general plan on the El Camino corridor, is that we do get a lot of jaywalkers near the Bart Station between Victoria and Milbrae Avenue. And actually, just yesterday, I saw somebody panhandling along the median there. So, I think the general consensus is we did not want to put a intersection at Chadborn and El Camino because it's too disruptive to traffic flow, but maybe to put some type of a fence, maybe we can have vines and shrubs growing around it to make it a little bit nicer, but some type of a fence along the median between Victoria and Milbrae Avenue to discourage jaywalking in that area.
Actually, I did talk this, regarding this with your city engineer about that. And the public needs to understand that Caltrans fund is very limited. We are, we are spreading really, really thin. For example, let me give you just rough number of what's going on. In order to fix a one lane of the road for one mile, if it is asphalt concrete, costs between, it fluctuates depending on how much we fix, between $500,000 to $2 million. One lane, one mile. So, and the concrete actually becomes more expensive, it goes above that. It becomes, this dollar figure I'm giving you is a decade old. So, it is very difficult for us to follow through with these safety improvements. I understand your concern. So, I encourage the cities to do their own project, to make their own improvement under permits, and we do allow that. Strawberry and, you know, trees, they are, they look great if somebody can maintain them. Caltrans cannot maintain them, so we do often have city approaching us with, hey, can we install these and we'll maintain it? Then we will allow that under a permit. So, I know there's definitely a huge concern. If there is a, for example, if there is one location that you have constant accident, we can probably put something up there, like chain link fence, but it looks really, really ugly.
I'm not saying like a chain link fence. And first of all, I'm not necessarily saying that Caltrans has to pay for it. I think we could probably come up with some funds to pay for it in the city, but to have your blessing on the project.
Sure, absolutely.
And something that, you know, right along the, the, sorry, the driveway that goes along El Camino in front of, you know, between Taylor and Hillcrest and, you know, along that little strip, there is a fence that's, it's not a chain link fence, it's a little bit nicer looking and there are plants along that area too. So, something similar to that.
Sure.
So, I think just to keep the conversation going with our public work staff.
Absolutely. And also, there's a, you know, CCAG, city and county associated governments actually have, they usually come as a whole, not just one city. So, I think it could be brought up in that forum as well as with the San Mateo CTA. And I think definitely, if a city would approach us with a certain plan, we will not ignore them. We will encourage that you guys do.
Okay. Thank you very much for that presentation.
No problem.
And thanks for all your hard work in our city and look forward to continue working with you.
We'll be seeing you often.
Okay. The next item that we have, all right, thank you, is the agenda overview and staff briefing. So, City Manager Rains?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I've got five brief items, some things going on in town I want to go over and then I'll head right into the agenda. First of all, I want to thank all of the CERT team members, that's Community Emergency Response Team, who participated in the county health department's deployment exercise, the Silver Dragon, on April 20th. During the exercise, several of the members that are part of our volunteer effort, headed by Dino Di Ranieri, went out into the neighborhoods of Bayside Manor, Silver Ranch, Green Hills, Meadow Glen and distributed information, educational materials to more than 1,000 households. Very impressive effort. They continue year after year to volunteer in our community. I think this is the ninth such exercise. In addition, we've started the community center demolition. If you haven't been by, you should. It began earlier this week, April 21st. Contractor that is using, contractor that is doing the work is using Laurel Avenue parking lot adjacent to the community center for the equipment, traveling predominantly on Lincoln Circle and Richmond Drive and using public parking adjacent to the tennis courts as well as down the center of Richmond. We're helping, hoping, he's helping to, the contractor is helping to reduce dust and debris by watering down sections of the center as they're doing the work. And we really appreciate the community's cooperation, all those residents that live around this and thank them for their patience as we continue this really important step in the overall project. I know we had the chief here earlier, but the detectives in the bureau have arrested a habitual auto burglary suspect on April 14th. There is a press release that should be on our website, investigation that started last fall. Cars where people were leaving valuables in plain sight, unsecured belongings were being stole. The sheriff does remind us, this is a major effort and he'd like to have you remember lock it or lose it is their motto. We also have Milbrae video surveillance registration. Those of you that do have video surveillance cameras on your property, if you would register them, when they do have investigations to do, they may contact you and ask if you're willing to share. That might help with some of the ongoing investigations. Contact the police department for that effort. And also, they're informing that within the next 10 days, we're starting a new effort, which is SMART, Speed Monitoring Awareness Radar Trailer. The trailer that has been outfitted with city logo and is linked to the police department efforts will simply be reminding motorists to slow down. It won't be used for enforcement purposes at this point. And this all dovetails into the council's strategic goals and how to look at community safety. And then finally, my last item of the six, five or six, is that this Saturday, April 29th, at Monterey Park, from 10 to 12, we have Arbor Day and Earth Day events. Invite all community members to join us in a special event, planting trees and shrubs and cleaning up litter around the city. So, we're very excited about that effort. And then continuing on with our agenda, we have this evening, a report of bills and claims since your last meeting, an update report from the chair of your senior advisory committee. We have public communications followed by two consent calendar items. The first is considering a resolution that would ratify a contract with St. Francis Electric for emergency street lighting and electrical conduit placement in the 4, 5 and 600 blocks of Hillcrest, the 4 and 600 block of Taylor and the 4 and 500 blocks of Hazel. The next item you have is for considering, excuse me, a resolution that would authorize a professional services agreement with- a professional services agreement with eight engineering firms for on-call engineering services. And I did have questions regarding this, earlier this afternoon, and would like to clarify. The council did authorize in January hiring of additional engineering staff to begin the process of building more of the capital improvements that we've outlined. Those personnel, some of whom have been hired and are here, but the majority of which will be in place May and June of, what, 60 days from now? We're in the, currently in the interview process. Those personnel, in addition to the on-call engineering services, are what's needed to accelerate the capital improvement project. The cost of the personnel that we identified in January, in addition to what is discussed in the staff report, if the council could, for a moment, understand the magnitude of the capital work that's being asked for, roughly 20 to 25% on top of the actual capital improvement project is what's needed in engineering, design, and inspection services. So when we bring forward an on-call service, some of the specialties that are being called for in this proposal that's before you this evening are for some of the specialties, not what we're hiring, or hiring generalist engineers that can help us with the administration, the design, and moving these projects forward in a timely fashion. What we're looking for in the professional services agreements and on-call, is some of the supportive, technical support for those engineering projects. Hopefully, that will be clear enough that this item can move forward this evening on consent. If not, I'll be available for questions, and we have the city engineer here with us this evening. Then moving on to existing business, we have a report on recreational facilities, both the community center and the ice rink that was discussed at your last meeting. Staff will update you on that. And then, under new business, we have considering an update on capital project for shared fiber network in San Mateo County and public Wi-Fi proof of concept. We have an informational report for you this evening. Following that, you have council comments, and we recommend closed session conference with property negotiator regarding 100 El Camino, after which you should adjourn to your next meeting. And I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you for the report. Any questions from council? Okay. Seeing done, we'll move on to item number four, which is an update report from the Senior Advisory Committee. So Marlene, sorry for waiting so long, but thank you for being here tonight.
Mayor Holliver, Vice President Gina Payton, and the rest of the council and staff, and all of you interested in the seniors. We are very, very excited to be here this evening, and we have all kinds of updates. And in front of you, you have the Millbrae Senior Line. And if anyone wants one of these, we have copies in the library or in the rec center that you can get them. The only change on the front page is that the birthday luncheon is going to be on the 17th instead of the 10th. And the reason for that, we usually meet the second Wednesday of the month at the Magnolia. And Magnolia has been, since the rec center burned down, we've been able to go there and have our luncheons. They also have us for their Senior Advisory Committee. And the exciting thing is that we don't have to pay for that, they're doing that. And they, at our meetings, we have good treats that they bring, warm baked goodies. So we seniors are being spoiled by so many people in the community. The library, we're working with the library, and as you go through the senior line, you'll see the many things that are being done. From the library, also there, with San Bruno, in connection with San Bruno, that's on page five, they are helping us also. So many of the exercising classes that we've had are now in the San Bruno Center. And you'll see that in Millbrae rec class, the library has opened many rooms for them to have their classes. So overall, this will give you an overview of what the seniors are doing. And you have another page there, and it has DIY. What does that mean?
Do it yourself.
I've asked several people, and they don't know what it is. Do it yourself. And the library is working with the seniors, and they have a DIY social. Their first meeting is on Monday, May the 8th, at 4:00, in the Millbrae Library Community Rooms. And there is a number there to call if you want to call or contact them. Especially if you have any interest in what's going on with the seniors, you go to the library, they have all the information there as well. We also have many opportunities. I will close this in just a minute, but I want, one of our members works with a boutique, and I'd like her to introduce herself and tell a little bit about what she's been doing.
My name is Rochelle Mullen, resident here in Millbrae. And once a week, we have seniors, ladies mostly, that meet, and we make items, mostly stitching items. And there's about a dozen of us, and we meet, thanks to the recreation people organizing it at the library, Wednesday mornings. What we make is sold to whomever would like to purchase it. When we were at the scene at the community center, we had a display. We don't have that capability right now, but thanks to the friends of the library, whenever they have a, a book sale, they provide us with a table so that we can display our wares. And when we sell something, that, the money that we make goes towards the senior programs. So the main thing that we enjoy, besides just the making of it, is the getting together. And we're constantly getting people coming in and saying, you know, I have a mother, I just got a call yesterday from a lady who said her mother is in an assisted living, and she heard about us, and she wanted to be able to come. So she's going to drop her off, she'll be a new person. But we make things for, for people to use, they're handmade. And then we always have a booth at the Art and Wine Festival, and we will again this year, and for the two days. And we sell things that are individually made, and they're fun. Tissue boxes, little banks, coasters, we, and we'll make things for, on order for people, somebody will want something in a different color or a different size. So we meet on Wednesday mornings at the Room A in the library, or sometimes they move us to the Chacudi Room, depending on what they need the rooms for. And we're there from about 9:00 until about 11:30. So I, if anybody has a senior person, a senior lady that would like to join us, it's free. We supply you with all the work, the products that you need to make it, and we'll, we'll instruct you. Some people are very, very beginners, and other people are a little bit more advanced on it. But all we, the best part is the enjoyment of sitting around and talking with each other. We talk about family, we talk about politics, and we do all kinds of things. So Wednesdays from 9:00 to about 11:30. Thank you.
And that's only one of the activities. You should see all the other activities that are going on. And Andy Rooney said, "I have learned that the best classroom in the world is at the feet or the visit of an older American."
Very wise. All right. Thank you, Marlene and Rochelle. Okay. The next item on the agenda is public communication. This is the opportunity to speak on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. Speakers have up to three minutes to speak, and the views that are presented tonight do not necessarily represent the views of the City of Millbrae or the Millbrae City Council. So the first speaker we have is John Muniz.
Put my lion's hat on, if you don't mind. Councilman Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to address this audience. My name is John Muniz, and I too am a senior American. And Millbrae resident, and the LEO advisor. This year, the Millbrae LEOs Club is celebrating 10 years of dedicated community service, supporting schools, seniors, civic organizations, and the city of Millbrae. LEOs are young adults from the age of 12 to 18. LEOs are junior lions that lead and run their own LEOs organization with a president and board of directors. Our Millbrae LEOs act as, our Millbrae Lions act as advisors, providing, mentoring and support. The name LEO says it all: leadership, experience, organization. In addition to building social skills, the LEOs learn teamwork, self-esteem, the importance of giving back through community service, and most important, fun. In appreciation for the outstanding support given to the LEOs by the members of our community, our schools, and the city of Millbrae, the Millbrae LEOs Club and the Millbrae Lions Club is hosting, that means free, a 10-year anniversary dinner. All are invited to attend on Saturday, May 13th, at St. Dunstan's Hall. Program starts at 6:00. Join the evening of fun, filled with raffle prizes, music by Johnny Midnight, a photo booth where you can express your creative side, and food provided by La Tapatia Mexicana. Our keynote speaker will be Krista Lee, a former Miss Chinatown USA for 2010, Miss California 2013, and Miss America runner-up 2014. If you would like to attend, please go online at millbreaosclub.org. That's millbreaosclub, one word, dot org. And look for the link. Or you can email me at jfmflash600@gmail.com. That's jfmflash@gmail.com. And provide your name and the number of guests. Hope to see all you, they are all your friends and neighbors, for an evening of fun. I do have some flyers, which I can leave here. Pick one up, thank you very much. Thank you. I have another, can I go on to my next subject?
The other item was something on the agenda tonight, right?
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not? Okay.
I've got another speaker slip.
Okay.
While I'm here, can I just-
Go ahead, yeah.
-segue into that? Thank you very much. You know, I've been reading this connectivity in Millbrae, shared fiber network.
Yeah, sorry, that's, that is on the agenda this evening, so.
Oh, I can't speak on that?
Not at this time, no.
Oh, until that comes up.
You can speak on it when that comes up in the meeting, but this is only for items not on the agenda right now.
I'll have to write an email then. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, any-
All right, John.
... for your time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. The next speaker is Wyn Gersich.
Hi, my name is Wyn Gersich, and I am here tonight to talk about Earth Day and the March on Science. You know, Dr. Wyn Parker, who lives here in Millbrae, he, he wrote Chloramine Causes Collateral Health Damage. He was one of the first whistleblowers to tell you that, how toxic that was. And I hope everybody checks out his Chloramine Causes Collateral Health Damage, because there was 300 studies done on that. And Ira Ruskin, when he was the head of the Bosque Water Board, claimed there wasn't any studies done. Go figure. So this is something, too, when you talk about, everybody's interested in health, and everybody's trying to do health fairs, and they're worried about the hospitals and all this stuff, well, we're people getting cancer more and more and more because they put poison in our drinking water. A hazardous waste product is fluorosilic acid. Jackie Spears wrote a bill in 1990 to fluoridate the rest of the state. So under her bill, they added the rest of the poison in the cities that didn't have it in 2005. Why are we putting a hazardous waste product in our drinking water? We can vote to stop fluoridation. We can also do what Wyn Parker said, and use alternative technology to disinfect the water and replace the water in sewer lines. One of the books that's really extremely important is this, Science is for Sale. And it talks about, the first person who wrote the foreword is Mark Edwards. Mark Edwards did the studies on lead in Washington DC 2003. When I first started coming to the city council, that was the article I gave you from the Washington Post. They actually pulled this man's funding for his lead studies, and they tried to discredit him, and they actually pulled that article right off the internet. Now you can look it up, all these years later, because lead has been leeching way back since 2003. And what's really amazing is that the things that are happening right now, this, this March on Science, they were talking about this climate change thing, and how Trump had defunded some of it. I want everybody to look up on YouTube, Public Law 105-83. Our government actually passed a law that they can spray biological warfare, they can spread diseases, funguses, all kinds of things on us and not get sued. So when you're worried about health, when they're spraying these things every day on us, and people are getting horrible diseases, and then you wonder what the heck's going on, between our city councils poisoning our drinking water, we bring spray daily with the things from the chemtrails, and then they've actually passed laws to cover it up. People should be enraged, and you should do something about this. But this book here, like I said, Science for Sale, the man who wrote this book, his name is David Lewis, PhD, he also exposed many of the things with bio sludge, he exposed the dental hand things that actually gave AIDS to people because it sucks in blood and he's... Anyway, a lot of the information of how laws have been changed are in this book. And we need to get involved in this, because you know something, nobody-
Your time has expired.
What?
Your time has expired.
Oh, okay. Look up Chloramine Causes Collateral Health Damage. Thank you.
Okay. The next speaker is Lou Sandrini. Sorry, just one moment. The timer isn't quite working, so I'll be doing a timer from my desk here.
Ready, set.
Okay.
This is a follow-up to the letter I sent you on April 10th, requesting that you make as a policy agenda item in a timely fashion, opportunity for debate and dialogue on the current garbage contract. That's a 24-year contract that was put in place eight years ago, provides for every eight years, an opportunity to reconsider that contract. In my letter, I spell out many reasons why we should reconsider that contract, and request that you do that in timely fashion. One of the principal reasons is that contract is not cost-based, which, as we know, non-competitive franchises and our water bills and everything should be cost-based. Likewise, our garbage collection should be cost-based. There have been opportunities during the past eight years for the garbage company to significantly reduce their costs and increase their profits while maintaining good service. It is important to have good service, but a competitive contract, competitive rates are known to provide good service throughout the country, so. And our garbage rates in the last eight years will have gone up almost 50% for our residences and more for commercial garbage. So I think it's imperative that we reconsider that contract and have an opportunity for competition, so we make sure that our garbage rates are competitive while we are still getting as good a service as we're getting today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. We have two items this evening. The first is a resolution ratifying a contract with St. Francis Electric for emergency street lighting and electric conduit placement at the 400, 500, and 600 blocks of Hillcrest at Boulevard, 400 and 600 blocks of Taylor, and 400 and 500 blocks of Hazel Avenue. The second item, which is item six, is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign professional services agreement with eight engineering firms for on-call engineering services. I believe Councilwoman Schneider had a comment on item five.
I need to recuse myself from the, one of the consent items, because I live within 500 feet of the action. So I'm accusing myself from, I'm trying to scroll down here, I think it's item number five.
Item five, correct.
So I'm-
Okay.
-walking away.
So we will have a first vote then on item number five. We have a motion from Councilman Lee and a second from Councilwoman Oliva. Your votes, please. Do I have to press it here? Do I have to press it here? Microphone.
Item number five on the consent calendar passes with four votes, and Councilmember Schneider abstaining.
Okay. The next item is item number six. See if we could clear the board, please. Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Oliva and a second from Councilman Lee. Your votes, please.
Item number six on the consent calendar passed unanimously.
All right. The next item is Existing Business and Update on Recreation Facilities. Do we have a staff report? Oh, Mr. Shear?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, I'd like to just give you a brief update on the status of two important recreational facilities. One is, as a follow-up to your meeting on April 11th regarding the discussion of a possible ice rink in Millbrae, the Parks and Recreation Commission considered the item at their April 18th meeting, and at that meeting, they discussed appropriate locations of the -- where to site the ice rink. And based upon the discussion at the council meeting on the 11th, in which most of the possible options were not viewed as favorable possible locations, the discussion then led to sort of a side discussion of the citing of the modular buildings for the interim recreation center to be sited at the back parking lot here at City Hall. And on that, under that assumption, a portion of Library Avenue was slated to be closed to accommodate the placement of one of the modulators for the interim community center. So then, based upon that assumption, the discussion at the commission level then went to, well, if we're going to be closing Library Avenue to accommodate the community center module, then perhaps we can close the eastern portion of Library Avenue up to Magnolia to site the ice rink. And so, the commission then voted to support that recommendation of locating the ice rink on Library Avenue. Well, so subsequent to that meeting, the city attorney and the city engineer informed staff that the city does not have the legal authority to close Library Avenue for an extended period of time outside of an emergency. So therefore, Library Avenue is not an option for placement of either interim modular building for the -- or modular building for the interim community center or the ice rink. And so, that's -- so, staff is continuing to look at other options regarding the interim community center for the modular buildings, particularly looking at, still focused on the City Hall parking lot, and is sort of making, sort of as a big jigsaw puzzle of making it additional square footage fit back there. And so, that's where we're currently standing with that, and staff will continue to work with the city council subcommittee on the community center on the final decision on that. And the ice rink is still looking for a location, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions on, just on the staff report before we do any further discussion on this topic? Yes, Vice Mayor Papin?
So, to be clear, the modular units have been ordered or have not yet been ordered?
They have not been ordered because the final site plan has not been determined.
Okay. And I believe the subcommittee and the primary discussions is that we try to locate them here in the City Hall area?
Correct.
And that would entail an increase in the electrical system, correct?
Correct.
So, we are still talking about a temporary use of Library Avenue. Is it Library Avenue or Library Street?
Avenue.
Library Avenue. A portion of that for the ice skating rink, which would, since we already have to make the expenditure for the electrical, could accommodate both? Is that correct? We don't have a...
Um--
I hear discussions in the background. We're still discussing that. There's a difference between using it for modulators for one to two years, or a temporary month or two for an ice skating facility, so it's still being discussed as to that So, do we know what the electrical upgrade entails for the modular units, and if the ice skating rink goes in the same area?
The power requirement upgrade for the modulators is 800 amps, so we would just need confirmation that that could accommodate the ice rink as well.
All right. Well, I believe the discussion with another staff member would require further increase, up to 1,200 amps?
Correct, correct. To accommodate both facilities, correct.
Okay. So, we would need to know what the expenditures are, as one as opposed to both, or whatever?
Sorry to interrupt, but would that be two separate upgrades, or could that be done with one upgrade?
It could be done with one, and that'd actually probably be preferred, just knowing how difficult it can be to get PG&E out here.
So, is it just a final question there then? We are pursuing PG&E right now, because further delays, we've been delayed now with the demolition, and we do not want to be delayed with PG&E since it's a given that the upgrade has to occur in that area.
Correct.
Okay. So, we just want to be clear on that. That is going to happen.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? Because we also have several speaker slips on the topic. Councilwoman Oliva?
Could you clarify what you just said with regards to the PG&E? We are pursuing PG&E, so what's the timeframe to get them out here to do the upgrade?
So, we have been in communication with PG&E, and once we have a final site plan for the modulators, then they'll be able to actually give us a more concrete timeframe as to when they'd be able to complete the upgrade.
So, what's not concrete? What's the timeframe now that they're throwing out there?
Approximately three to six months. It's a pretty broad timeframe.
Three to six months. And so, if we had a site, we would get it within three to six months? Even if we had the modules delivered tomorrow, we'd have to wait three to six months?
Correct.
And since we don't currently have a site for the ice rink in that location, if we're unable to use Library Avenue, then that is, could be on a separate timeline, if that's not where it's going to go.
Perhaps, yes. Yes, if it's not where it's going to go, it would have to be on a separate timeline, correct.
Councilman Lee?
Can we order those modules and store them someplace, or is it advantageous just to move it once?
They're not trailers, I think you put them in and they're in for a while.
I see. Okay. So, it's not, isn't there like construction trailers where they're on wheels and, oh, I see. Okay, so--
And they do go into the sewer, they do hook up with the sewer system as well?
Correct. So, we're going to have to do some sewer hookups, too. Okay. All right. The other thing, too, is I would encourage us to upgrade our electrical regardless, because when we have our festivals, we use emergency generators, which uses diesel fuel, which puts out diesel fumes. So, and we have our regular festivals, the Lunar New Year Festival and the Japanese Festival. And if we want to do any other festivals, we have to bring in an emergency generator, or not us, but they have to bring an emergency generator. And if we can get away from using emergency generators as a power source, yeah, whatever event, that would be advantageous for our participants.
I think it's important to know if those would require 800 amps or 1,200 amps for those festivals, if we don't need a 1,200 amp power source for the Lunar New Year and the Japanese Festival.
I think that if I might, that's, oh, sorry. That's the point Councilmember Lee is making. What you're talking about, the 800, is solely for the modulators right now, so if we're going to make the investment, we might as well make it more versatile to begin with, so that we can accommodate future events.
We do have several speaker slips on this topic. The first speaker is Rick Saletta.
My name is Rick Saletta. I am from Woodside. I'm speaking on behalf of the Belmont youth hockey community. I have lived and worked in Silicon Valley for 20 years. This is my first time in Millbrae. It's nice to have a reason to come here, and I hope to have another reason to come in the near future, a reason to bring my family, all right? There's high demand for ice time in Silicon Valley that you may not be aware of. In fact, the capacity utilization that we looked at when discussing San Mateo suggests we need six sheets of ice in San Mateo County just to meet the need. However, you may not be aware that Redwood City Rink will be closing in the near future as Stanford Healthcare has an outstanding bid, a very generous bid, on that piece of property, and they're taking over that part of Redwood City. Without the San Mateo Rink open, this creates even more demand. Millbrae has an opportunity to attract residents from our program who live in Portola Valley, Palo Alto, Woodside, Menlo Park, Redwood City, and Atherton. Finally, have a reason to come up here. When we were participating in the Belmont youth hockey program, you should know that my family, as an example, spent an average of $1,000 per month in the Belmont-San Carlos area on skating lessons, ice time, Home Depot runs, sushi with the kids after skating, and supermarket runs during practice. $1,000 a month went into the community because we skated out of Belmont. $1,000 per month left the community. We haven't been back since the rink closed. So, those are some of the economics to consider when you think about a temporary ice rink and the kinds of people it may attract into the area and what it can do for the community. Temporary rink is a great way to create a recreational family opportunity and also turn a profit for the community. I understand that there is a capital investment, if well-managed. Most of these temporary rinks are well-managed but are not really used to their capacity. If well-managed, and if you work with the community that is involved in generating more opportunities for kids to get on the ice, we will help you to keep the rink at capacity. We will introduce you to the people and the groups looking to get more ice time, be them adult hockey skaters, the senior skaters I was with today, the Secoria High School special education class that I coach, the youth hockey program, the ice dancers, the curlers, the ice theater. We all need more ice time to give our families opportunity. Additionally, there's an opportunity for the rest of the area businesses to also increase their revenue and increase the tax base here. Using some of the area space to set up food trucks around the rink at a nominal fee could be very profitable for the local restaurants. There's no, doesn't have to take away, it can increase the business opportunity for local businesses. We even heard a lady earlier talk about some of the knickknacks that they make. I think they might want to stand out there. So, I want you to keep in mind that we will help you to populate this rink and to operate it at capacity utilization, but without it, all you have for us is a Bart's station.
All right. Thank you. The next speaker is Annette Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor Holiver and Millbrae City Council for your time. My name is Annette Garcia, and I'm a Peninsula skating coach at the Redwood City Ice Oasis. I'm speaking on behalf of the Peninsula children and families, those currently that skate and have to travel far to do so, some from Millbrae, and those who have yet to discover this amazing, life-changing sport. I understand that you're currently in deficit recreationally due to the sad loss of your beloved center, also that you have contemplated this temporary rink possibly for the holidays. Firstly, let me just say how community skating can be profitable for both your city and local businesses. This can be seen in the city of San Mateo's recent successful win-win with their two-year holiday rink. Secondly, let me tell you about the diversity and the benefit of this recreational sport. I've seen two-year-olds find joy in the ice, and people into their 80s and 90s find weekly joy and exercise on the ice. It's a much better option than video games or sitting on the couch. It makes for great family time together, too. My favorite example of this is a friend named Connie Curry who started skating in her 50s and now is competing as an ice dancer nationally in her 70s. She's also sight impaired. I have students who are autistic, and they thrive when they skate. They fly, and the joy on their faces you cannot imagine. I know a lovely young lady that I met who skates in her wheelchair. Her whole family skates together with her in her wheelchair. So, skating knows very few limits, and it teaches bravery. I hope you find and allocate the space for this amazing sport and add it to your recreational offerings. Skating makes for a healthier, happier community for anyone at any age. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker, we have Sarah Feldman, Josie Rushton, and Robbie. Are you coming up together or individually? Okay.
Good evening, City Council. I'm up here, and I'm speaking on behalf of Robbie and Josie, who are in the audience. Both are beneficiaries of the various skating rinks along the Peninsula. Robbie and I used to work together at the Belmont Rink, and Josie and I met ice skating over the course of a couple of years. So, in order to respect your time, I'm up here speaking on their behalf. I'm also speaking on behalf of the 100,000 figure skaters that were displaced at the closure of the Belmont Rink. They have no place to skate right now, and it sounds like the Redwood City Rink is going to be closing soon, too. This is a great opportunity for the city of Millbrae. This is, you know, a phenomenal sport that will bring in people, it will benefit the businesses in the area, it will benefit your citizens, you know? Having folks in all sorts of age ranges who would love to use this facility would be great. I really encourage you to make this decision about a location in a timely manner. You've got a lot of great opportunities as far as locations go. You know, one that's near the community center would be great. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. The next speaker is Sabrina Grohr.
I skated at Bridge Point Ice Rink, and it closed, and it's going to reopen soon, but I am here representing the Silicon Valley Ice Skating Association. Let's see them back here. Sarah Feldman, she had built an ice rink in Santa Barbara in a place called Goleta, California. I also skated in this temporary ice skating rink. Photos of how crowded the San Mateo facility. It was jam-packed. You're talking about revenue? Every facility I've been at, from Belmont, to San Mateo, Redwood City, they're all jam-packed. Parks and Recreation Commission suggested the best location for the ice rink will be near City Hall. The Walnut Creek Holiday Ice Rink had 40,000 skaters last year and has been around for 12 years. Holiday rinks increase surrounding businesses-- Holiday rinks increase surrounding businesses by 20% and will bring in 100K in profit. I believe it can bring in more in profit just because it is jam-packed. I can tell you, I used to live in Millbrae. I went to school in Millbrae, and I learned to drive to the Bridge Point Ice Rink. And I skate after work. Anyway, it does bring in revenue, and it's a great idea. Also, if you do not want to put it near Library Avenue, I think Library Avenue is a great location. I also believe there are other locations in Millbrae that you could put this temporary rink, maybe on the roof of Safeway, on the roof of Office Depot, maybe in the middle of Taylor Athletic Field. That's a pretty big field. It's also near the city, near downtown. But Park and Rec did recommend that you put it in Library Avenue. Whatever you decide, we hope that you will consider a temporary ice rink in Millbrae. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bob Garrison.
Just a few thoughts on the ice rink. First of all, I really feel that, based on where we are now with the REC Center, we don't know how much we're getting from the insurance company. We don't know what we're going to build. We don't have a return on the ice rink. And I'm, you know, I'm not a terrible ice skater, and I love ice skating, and I love all recreation sports, which you know, I've been involved in all of the youth organizations in Millbrae. Millbrae is going to be faced with some heavy taxes coming up, and I don't, a lot of the people don't know this. So we're already paying for the fire assessment. Next year, we are going to have another tax rate on our homeowners and property owners for the school district. We still don't have an answer on, we don't know what we're going to build at the REC Center. So we don't know what the insurance is going to pay. What I'm hearing is we're going to have another tax or a bond issue to float for the REC Center. Our water rates are going to double. To rebuild our infrastructure, we have to rebuild two of our tanks. Our underground system is crumbling. So now you're going to go out and spend $250,000 for a temporary ice rink. And we don't have a return, we don't have an idea what it's going to make, what it's going to cost. If you do that, and it flops, and you go to try to ask the homeowners to pay for another bond issue to rebuild their REC Center, they're going to say, "Well, what about the 250 for the ice rink? Where did that go?" That's really something to think about. Now, you've got modular buildings that are coming in to... Now, I'm under the impression that the children are not going to be in the modular buildings. Am I correct? These are office spaces for the modulators, for the...
Just to clarify, the modular buildings are both office spaces and meeting rooms and recreation classrooms?
Thank you. So I'm going to go off that topic. So the other item, too, is, you know, is people are here from Portola Valley, and they're here from the East Bay, and, you know, Portola Valley, I mean, there's so much money down there, and they can't build an ice rink there. And we're asking us to build one here, and we don't have any money. So, something to think about.
All right. Thank you, Bob. The next speaker is Rob Decote.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So I'll just keep my comments brief because we've heard me speak about this before. So, you know, I think we're, once again, premature in having this conversation about the ice rink. The dialogue seems to generate around that we seem like it's almost a done deal, like we're already preparing for an infrastructure upgrade, we're having those discussions, and we're speaking as if it's a done deal, and yet this was sent back to Park and Rec for a business case analysis. And while I respect the folks that have come here and spoken how there's high demand for ice rink, what they're speaking to seems to be something larger than a 50-by-22 temporary holiday ice rink. Okay? So if that's what we're really trying to do, then I will say again, please do the right thing and send us to Park and Rec and keep it there until a business case comes up that provides you the financial returns that we're looking for as a city. That outlies a plan to get the folks here, a marketing and research plan that gets us here, to sit here and just talk about a temporary ice rink that's 50-by-22, 1100 square feet, when your average national ice rink hockey is in excess of 17,000 square feet, and a 2,000 square feet for a curling sheet. Okay? We're talking about something bigger than what we were proposed here. So again, I'll cap it this way. It's real simple. We sent this to Park and Rec last two weeks ago for a reason, because the smart call here is to wait till we've had the analysis to include the site location, infrastructure requirements, the marketing, the operations, maintenance, insurance, and all the other responsibilities the city will have to meet if we put it here. To be clear, if we do this right, and it comes back, we can do this, and there's a demand from just Millbrae, not just the other cities, but Millbrae, too, then it's probably a good idea. But until that is done, this is not a wise decision to move forward, and that's the last I'll say about it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Rob. The next speaker is Lou Sandrini.
You've heard all the reasons you need to put this on ice, period. You've heard from others. At your last meeting, the name Doug Radke was mentioned, and someone said, "Oh, he doesn't live in Millbrae." Like, shouldn't hear, listen to him. Most people you heard tonight don't live in Millbrae, okay? Let me remind you, your public trust responsibility is to the citizens, commercial businesses, and taxpayers of Millbrae, as these people have been pointing out. You've heard all the reasons. I'm not going to spend a lot of time repeating them, except put it on ice and listen to those reasons, and look at your accountability, your public trust responsibility, where it lies. All these other people have put it in broad terms, many reasons, but it all comes down to your public trust responsibility. And think about that, and think about what your citizens are telling you. Then you'll make the right decision. As the last speaker said, put it on ice, put it on ice with the REC Committee.
All right, thank you, Lou. The next speaker is Morse Family. I'm sorry, I don't remember your first name. If you could introduce yourself at the microphone.
My name is Merron Morse. I represent a family of four, two small children. I'm not in favor of the ice rink. I'm not saying that against ice skating. I love ice skating. But I think this proposal is, people are framing it as a referendum, as either there's, if we don't vote for it, ice skating is going to go away. I think these very wealthy communities in the southern part of the county can use their fundraising efforts to build a facility in Woodside, Portola Valley, and not have Millbrae's 20,000-plus residents, perhaps 4,000 or 5,000 children subsidize someone else's recreational dreams for 30 or 60 days. If it's a private endeavor and can make a profit, as many people pointed out, why not make it in a private facility and have it run 365 days a year so you can have these great events? And I would love to have my son play ice hockey, but not, I don't want to spend my money in a temporary facility. $200,000 will, $50,000 for the upgrade, $200,000 for perhaps the use of the facility. It's going to be vulnerable to weather. What happens if it's raining? That's not a good option for recreation if it's, people, it's rained out. The location can't compete with larger cities like San Mateo that have better parking, larger parks, more infrastructure. If San Mateo can do it, Woodside has a lot of open space, Portola Valley has great parks. They can shut down Hunter Park for a little bit if they want to put a nice ice rink over there. Larger cities have higher populations and that can use and pay for the property. San Mateo has over 100,000 people. Millbrae has 20,000 people, or a little bit more than that. Once again, Millbrae shouldn't subsidize other cities in the county for their recreation. It doesn't serve the senior community. The presentation earlier brought about the activities seniors use. They maybe enjoy watching ice skating, but I think we can use the money to help maybe pay for more classes, more instructors for their use. Money for other programs could be used for other recreational opportunities. Burlingame has great bocce courts, outside gazebos, picnic areas that attract recreation throughout the year. We could add those facilities to our Central Park and use some of this $250,000 to create year-round facilities. We could upgrade our playgrounds. Our playgrounds, my son hears, "Daddy, what's the squeaky sound above me? There's grease that needs to be put on our basic facilities, basic maintenance. Oh, Dad, this is, what's this stuff? Oh, it's red, it's rusty." Oh, my son's going to get tetanus from our poorly maintained facilities. We have an opportunity to use a large amount of money to upgrade facilities for more than 30 to 60 days for the use of Millbrae's citizens. Let's take advantage of that. And once again, I think this is more of a, is being used as a political rally for special interest group rather than a Millbrae interest. So I want people to think about, we're not voting against ice skating. We're voting for better use of Millbrae's funding that we've used in taxpayers. And that's what I want to focus on, is please consider this as using the money for other things, not vote against Millbrae's ice skating.
The next speaker is Chris Del Negro.
We would like to point out, we do have a bocce ball court on Green Hills.
Bocce ball or a criss?
Both, both, over Green Hills. It's not in very good shape, just reporting, just in case.
So Christopher Del Negro, Millbrae resident, also the chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I want to clarify, we did not address the ice skating rink from a business plan perspective because we had no business plan to review. So we have not reviewed any business plan from the Park and Rec Commission. We are still open to doing so if you guys feel it's necessary, but until there's a business plan, we can't move forward on such an activity. As far as location, we did review quite a few of the possible locations brought up. We could not find another location that was less objectionable than Library Way. The way we moved forward was, we said, "Look, if hypothetically, City Council's going to do this, this would be the least objectionable location." And that's what we gave you. We did eliminate the idea of putting it into Central Park, primarily because of the noise and the residents around it. We didn't want to put this type of activity anywhere near homes. That was a concern for the noise. So if you'd like to send it back, we're welcome to look at it again. If you have a business plan from staff, we can go over that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Okay, that's all the speaker slips that I have for this item. Oh, looks like we have one more. Marge Colli-Pietro.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. State increase, 12 cents a gallon for fuel tax. State increase in annual vehicle registration fee. State assessment, $100 a year for electric vehicles. Annual Prop 13 property tax increase 2% for 2017. Possible MESD property parcel tax. Millbrae water rate increase to cover increased wholesale water purchases from the SFPUC and the cost of upgrading, operating, and maintaining our water system. Allowances for unmentioned taxes and assessments that come along. I ask all council members to pause and give utmost consideration to the final impact, sorry, financial impacts and burdens that will be imposed on our residents and utility users, many of whom live paycheck to paycheck, those who live on fixed income, and I don't mean those making over $100,000 a year, those who already struggle to maintain a quality of life they deserve with or without children. The city manager sent out another one of her messages to the community in which she states, quote, "I'm happy to say that our city is in very good financial position, and we could out, and we outperformed our budget projections by more than $2 million. While the additional revenue is welcome news, we remain cautious because of ongoing long-term infrastructure needs as well as the rebuild efforts for the Millbrae Community Center," close quote. No matter where you put a temporary ice rink, the 24-hour must-run generator freezer, there will be impacts in our neighborhoods. Sound does travel, and there's no way to turn the sound down. I ask you to pause for a reality check. We cannot be all things to all people, but we can be the best thing for the good of the whole community. A temporary ice rink expenditure of $200, a quarter of a million dollars plus at this time in our city's history is not prudent, is not responsible, nor is it fair to the community at large. Add the $250 million plus to the huge costs of rebuilding our community center so that everyone will have back a place to call our second home. We are a laughingstock in the county. Since the last meeting, people have come up to me. If you spend all those millions on a temporary ice rink instead of using it for a new community center, I will not vote for a community center bond. Say it isn't true, a quarter of a million for temporary ice skating? Look how Millbrae has had to struggle. Are your council members crazy? What are they drinking? Already three minutes? And then, well, I just had two more sentences.
Please wrap up very quickly.
All right. With all you guys have to do in Millbrae, what's wrong with the council? What happened with the two transit developments? Get them built, get millions in return. Why in the, I'll say heck, don't they know what matters most to a community? Short-term fund at the expense of long-term investments? Maybe they should take finance classes. I'm sure glad they aren't acting on our city council.
All right, thank you, Marge. So those are all the speaker slips that we have on the topic. So as it stands right now, it's an informational item. We do not have a location for an ice rink. What comments does the council have? Vice Mayor Papin?
Just, we're talking recreation, so as far as the community outreach, can we? Yeah, meetings are being scheduled, and people should receive announcements in the mail. May 16th, September 19th, October 26th.
For the community center rebuilding process, not for...
There will be more. I just wanted, since we have some people watching here, you will get further announcements. But if you read that, and the, May 16th is a combined Park and Recreation Committee meeting, so the meeting at 7:00 PM, and I believe it's the Jacuti Center, and we will keep passing the word as much as...
I believe it's Library Room A, I think.
Did I misread? Sorry. We do have it on the website, but please, the more people that are there and help us as we progress in this process, the more helpful it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments or questions on either the ice rink, community center rebuilding, or recreational facilities in Millbrae?
Really quick. Ms. Feldman, are you in the audience? You were going to provide a business plan? Was that, you did do so? Okay, was that specific to Millbrae or was that for Galida?
That was specific to Millbrae.
So I believe, and I believe our staff was going to put together a business plan also, and we don't know if that's accurate.
Thank you.
If I may, we actually got a quote from an operator and have provided that to the city numerous times. Thank you.
So I spoke with the operator this afternoon, and he basically put together, they're very sort of general numbers for construction and, but to get an accurate business plan, a business plan is driven by the location, potential location of an ice rink. So that, as opposed to putting the cart before the horse, we're going to have to have a location, and then the location will drive the business plan.
I think I probably know the answer to this question, but I would just like to ask, based on where we are right now, not having a location, is this still a priority for the council to keep spending time on this?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
And my opinion is no, as well, I haven't seen, you know, thank you for everyone who came out here tonight to the meeting. I don't think there is the interest from the community, the city, people of the city of Millbrae, to be doing this right now. And I appreciate the, what was said on behalf of the ice skating advocates, none of whom live in Millbrae, and the...
I did get some positive reasons.
Well, okay, so we've had two meetings on this. We have had former resident of Millbrae, correct? We have had former resident of Millbrae, correct? From Millbrae, okay.
And Mayor, there's numerous letters and emails that have not been publicly read for the sake of.
So far, we've had one current Millbrae resident who's come to the last two meetings to speak in support of the ice rink, and we've had 15 to 20.
Mr. Mayor, we've taken, hold on, please, we've taken a vote and you've got the vote. It's not what you wanted, but okay. And this is just a step in a direction. I mean, if the business plan comes back in such a way that it's not beneficial, the rest of the council, we will all discuss that. But to now bring it up like this. My concern is that we are clear with staff, though, that if we're gonna make an investment in upgrading the electrical system in that area, not only for an ice rink, but also for the modulators and any future events, don't do something that's just minimal, and then we have to pay for it later. That just doesn't make any sense at all. If the city's gonna make an investment, and PG&E's gonna come out here, hoping, let's do it right the first time and make this, our whole civic center area work for the future. And if we can get some consensus on that, I don't want any mixed messages going back and forth here. This is not just for an ice rink, just for the modulators. This is for the civic center area. So if we can make this a public consensus, I mean, we can't make a vote because it's only an informational item, but do, is the council in agreement?
Yes, but with all due respect, Mayor, the clarifications to a couple of the speakers were clarified facts that you chose to clarify. And I'd like to say that $250,000 is a lot of money, but once we have a business plan, that'll be clear too. Because I think that, in fairness to the three that are here, sitting up here, that would like to see a plan before we vote on anything, that's never been publicly clear. That's seed money. That's in order to make an investment, to make an investment. And it's not millions, the last speaker spoke with millions, I don't know where that came from. And with regard to, we don't know how much we're insured for. Yes, we do know how much we're insured for.
No, we do.
Yes, yes, we do. We're insured for replacement value of which we are negotiating.
We don't have a dollar amount at this time.
But, Bobby.
No, I'm sorry.
But let me clarify, because some of the things are clear, but I want to clarify everything if we're gonna clarify everything. And we don't know about $250,000. So to the public and to anybody listening, we are not going to spend $250,000 for two months for people to skate. That is not gonna happen between any five of us. But a business plan, we're asking for, that's all. To have some fun and hopefully promote businesses in Millbrae.
And I think if the, assuming that the Library Avenue site is not viable, we'd probably need to go back to Parks and Recreation Commission to get the preferred alternative for the next site.
At this point in time, it's still viable, and we will know better by next week.
That's not what the staff report said.
You know, I mean, the council has already devoted, I mean, not voted, but we've already expressed the opinion that we want to move on and explore this. We're not saying we want to make all the financial analysis. It's not gonna go to the Recreation Commission for finance, that's not their job. Their job is to tell us to put, where we're gonna put it, and what would be the best impact for the community. It's not their job to do the financial analysis. It's our job as the council members to do that. I'm hoping that the public would be open-minded. I know some people here are very against it, I understand that. But this is an opportunity for funding different from Millbrae, which is different from a bowling alley, which is different from a theater that everybody wants to put in their city. So, and there's a huge demand for ice skating, rather, there's, in such a demand, they don't care how big this skate rink is. They just want to get on that ice. And that's the impression I've been getting from the emails I've been getting and from the people I've been talking to. There are people who are dead-set against it, I understand that, and I don't understand why people just hate ice rinks, but whatever, I'll take it. But then, nobody bats an eye when we spend a million dollars on other things that have no money returned on it, you know, and we think that's a great, and we, you know, I support that too. So, you know, fine, but let's give this a chance.
Vice Mayor Pappin?
Yeah, I think we just need to be clear that we're all in consensus here, that whatever happens, it's completely transparent to the public so that the public knows as we move forward what the plan is or what will be presented. Because transparency is key here. So, again, an initial number was thrown out, we don't have specifics here, we hope to get some specifics, we hope to get, hopefully, a specific location so that everything can be evaluated. But clearly, everything will be transparent, and we hope by moving forward here, we can get a better idea of what this can bring to Millbrae, how we can work with probably Silicon Valley Foundation, fundraise from outside sponsors and all that stuff, that the community will still benefit from all this without a great cost.
Councilman Schneider?
Can you help me understand the process then? So, an outside entity has provided a business plan, it's gone to our staff, they're evaluating it, and then it will go where? What steps are we looking at here?
Well.
And how does that become transparent, I'm sorry, how, forget, how does that become transparent to the public too?
So in terms of, in terms of what was provided to staff, in terms of a proposed business plan, sort of a generic business plan in terms of what it was, you know, that's sort of looked at as a guide through my discussions. I've now spoken with three operators and sort of gone through some of their sort of generic costs and potential revenue projections for what a business plan would look like. But again, it has to be a specific, location-specific. And so, the information provided so far has been helpful, again, as a guide, but we need something that's very specific to Millbrae and to the specific location.
With our weather conditions then, with not knowing what next rainy season's being projected as, not knowing, well, we don't get much wind that time of year unless it's a storm, airport noise, the things that are very specific to our area as opposed to any other city.
Right.
Thank you. And then will it come to Park and Rec? Or will it come to council? Will the business plan be part of an agenda item so the public can review it? How will we do that?
I see the mayor nodding his head, so I.
I think it has to be like that way.
And I don't know if this is a thin business plan or a big, thick business plan with enough time to read it.
It'll have all the pertinent information for the council to make an informed decision.
Thank you.
I do have one other comment about recreation facilities, not the ice rink. We discussed the agreement that we have with the high school district regarding fields and aquatic pool use, and potentially, as soon as this summer, having some type of a aquatics program at Mills High School Pool. How have those conversations gone so far, and what are the next steps to getting something going on that?
So, initial discussions with the high school district indicated that the pool, Mills High School Pool will be closed this summer.
Oh, that's too bad.
Why?
Why, yes. It sounds convenient for them.
Not quite certain as to why, have to drill down a little bit on that, but that's been the initial response from the high school.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I think it'd be nice if the city council wrote the high school district a letter or two that, you know, I mean, they better have a good reason for this. It's a facility that we, the residents of Millbrae, already pay for, and the high school bond, it's also on your taxes, which people did not point out, college bond, library bond. We would like to make sure that we are able to use those resources, and I think a letter from the mayor would be helpful.
Councilman Schneider, and then let's move on.
I would only add that, again, having been a kid who grew up here, who swim lessened at Cappuccino, if Mills is gonna close down, there is Cappuccino, both of them have just been rebuilt in the last couple of years. So if, for some reason, they've got a leak and they've gotta empty the pool, there is cap. Could we include that in the letter? Let's at least try to get the bare, even the simplest of swim programs going. I think that would benefit families of all ages and people of all ages.
All right, thank you, Alan, and we look forward to the next presentation on this. The next item is item number eight, which is an update on the capital project for a shared fiber network with San Mateo County and public Wi-Fi proof of concept. We have with us our Finance Director, Deanna Hillbrant, as well as John Eaton, who has been working on this project for us.
Mr. Eaton here will present on a project we've been working on with the County of San Mateo to upgrade some city fiber network and also implement a pilot program for public Wi-Fi access in downtown Millbrae. So, Mr. Eaton will start his presentation, and we're happy to take questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Holber, Vice Mayor Pappin, council members, city manager. Appreciate the opportunity to come here this evening. I just wanted to ask, you guys need a 32nd, 7th inning stretch before we start? You guys okay?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, what we want to talk about tonight is Millbrae getting more connectivity via fiber networks in the Bay Area and providing Wi-Fi in the downtown area. But before I get into the details of what we're trying to accomplish, I want to talk a little bit about why this is important. So, there's lots of reasons why being connected through networks and to the Internet are important. Some of them are here. One of the ones that's very big talking point these days with a lot of cities and counties is smart city initiatives, where buses and garbage cans and other things are all linked and communicating. I think one that's really important to me, I have three kids, and all of them in school, they have to have Internet access. I mean, their assignments are given to them via the Internet, their research is done via Internet. So I think that it's important for everyone to have, to have access to that. I think you are considering doing an economic development project. I think there, if there's a desire to attract and retain high-tech residents and businesses, having some of these facilities is important, and clearly, public safety benefits from some of these things. So first, the first part of what we did is we looked at what connectivity Millbrae has currently, and then some of the plans to improve upon it. So, is everyone familiar with SAMCAT? Have they heard of SAMCAT? SAMCAT is a group of cities in San Mateo County. Way back, 10 or 15 years ago, as part of the cable franchise, there was fiber optic network provided to the cities in San Mateo County, Redwood City, San Carlos, Belmont, San Mateo, Burlingame, Millbrae, San Bruno, no, sorry, not San Bruno, South San Francisco, and a county center. We're all part of an initial network. That network is still in place, it's exceedingly slow by modern standards, and the equipment that's running at its end of life. Literally, in order to repair the network equipment, you have to go to eBay and try to find, to find the equipment. So, Millbrae, working with the County of San Mateo, has performed a proof-of-concept network running at 10 gigabits, which is, as you can see, compared to Point 04 gigabits, quite a bit faster. That work was completed three, four months ago, I believe. And we're on track to put a production network in that's 40 gigabits in the next two to three months. This is being done at no material cost to the city of Millbrae. The county is providing the network equipment and the installation services. There's a small amount of work required on Millbrae just to connect to it once it's installed. And I think that this is a good illustration of where it goes. So, this, these are the cities and how it's connected. It's kind of a ring, but not really a ring. And one of the things I think is very relevant is that the shared fiber network is in place now, and what's talking, what's being talked about is making the performance significantly faster and the security significantly higher. There's anticipation that healthcare, so HIPAA, credit card information, CGIS-type information will all traverse this network securely. And one of the things that's particularly relevant is the county, on its own, is deploying a fiber network to link its key sites around San Francisco, sorry, around San Mateo County, including connectivity to 200 Paul, which is in San Francisco, and Palo Alto Internet Exchange, which is in Palo Alto. These are major Internet POPs, points of presence. And the reason that's relevant is, when you have high-speed connectivity to facilities like this, you can go anywhere else in the state, the country, or the world. This is sort of the modern-day interchange. And what the county is looking to do is not only provide the shared fiber network access to the cities, they're looking to interconnect their county network to the shared fiber network to provide additional redundancy and additional connectivity options. Again, the core cost is being provided by the county, no material cost to the city. The other component of this connectivity upgrades that are being discussed is a Wi-Fi proof-of-concept. We looked at a couple of different areas to, is for viability. The current first choice is the Broadway Corridor. The second choice is along El Camino, that would span both sides and pick up some of the hotels and businesses there. And then, potentially connecting to.
What do you mean by choices here? What do you intend to do when you're talking?
So what we're talking about doing is actually putting in a Wi-Fi network, a Wi-Fi proof-of-concept network, to demonstrate that it works. So, excuse me. So, the plan that's being discussed right now is to put Wi-Fi along the Broadway Corridor. There's been quite a bit of research to determine how to do that, to save everyone the blow-by-blow. We hope to use existing conduit that ties the light poles together, and then use that fiber optic, run fiber optic cables through that existing conduit and use that to provide the connectivity to different access points. There appears to be conduit that goes along Broadway, there's conduit that runs along El Camino. There isn't an obvious path to join them, but that could be built. And there is conduit that ties Broadway to City Hall. So the key components are in place in order to, in terms of the conduit, and fiber optic cable could be pulled through the conduit to provide the connectivity required.
So what's the, what is the actual corridor? What's the, I can't get on the, or he's gonna tell me.
If I can look at the map, I think it's Santa Cruz down to Victoria.
Santa Cruz down to what?
Victoria.
I think he means La Cruz.
La Cruz, I'm sorry, La Cruz to Victoria.
No.
No, I think it's from.
Victoria to.
Victoria to north of Taylor, near Safeway, basically Safeway.
Yeah, so Safeway Walgreens on the north end, down to Victoria on the south end.
It might pick up Leonardo's, Leonardo's.
And I think that, you know, it's a soft bubble at this point, we need to, again, determine where the conduit goes and what's possible.
And then, just for the sake of doing just that, how much more is to do a little, how much is it to do a little bit more? I mean, what's the, what's the cost factor? Or is it experimental? Is it cost factor? Why did you pick there? Yeah, what's the, what determined the pilot?
Well, the pilot areas were determined by ease of installation, because it's a proof-of-concept, it's being done in partnership between the city of Millbrae and the county, and there's limited funds on both parties. We want to get something that will be impactful and meaningful to the community, that's relatively easy to achieve at a reasonable, reasonable price point, basically minimizing, you know, major construction, putting conduit in the ground, things like that.
So it's money.
Money's a big part of it, yeah. And there's, and there's other options, I mean, certainly, nothing has been installed yet, so if you all have some ideas on where you'd like it to be installed, I don't think that's out of the question, at least from.
And part of the funding is, or the bulk of, a lot of the funding is coming from San Mateo County.
Right, so in one of the, one of the upcoming slides, we'll talk about the participation of the parties. parties. So, San Mateo County is providing the access points, the wireless controllers, the installation and configuration of it, and support for the first year. Those are the initial conversations. And Millbrae will be providing the connectivity on the light poles and some sort of a pedestal-type location where the equipment can be housed.
Vice Mayor Pappin, and then Councilman Schneider.
I think you were here when Caltrans spoke, and they're going to be doing some upgrades. Can we get conduits parallel to, I mean, even if they don't connect at this point in time? If they're going to be upgrading their system, can we buddy on to that?
So, there is a very extensive conduit structure on El Camino currently. So, the shared fiber network actually runs up and down El Camino, and the county backbone runs up and down El Camino currently using the existing conduit infrastructure. So, that's done. It's the east-west laterals that would tie El Camino to Broadway. There is conduit between Broadway and the City Hall. There's not fiber in it currently, but the conduit is the expensive part.
Thank you.
Sure. Did you have some thoughts on...
Sorry, Councilman Schneider.
I have just a couple of questions. Starbucks has long used their Wi-Fi accessibility as a way to bring customers in. When cities have done this type of thing, or when Google Wi-Fi had all of Mountain View, did it hurt those merchants who'd already invested in a Wi-Fi system?
So, I haven't spoken directly with that specific Starbucks, but my general understanding is with Starbucks and other locations that provide Wi-Fi, they provide Wi-Fi in order to get clients in and to stay. They're not in the Wi-Fi business. They don't particularly want to be in that business. So, they are very glad to have someone else do it. I think that if there was a cafe across the street that didn't have it that now does, perhaps that would be an issue. But from what we're hearing, the concerns more commonly are that this is designed for public use. We're doing it in phases, but what happens is people get used to it. And I think Pescadero was a very good use case. So, Pescadero didn't want Wi-Fi initially. What do we care? We have no use for it. It was installed. I think everybody knows Pescadero is a relatively short main drag. Everyone started using it. The statistics grew and grew and grew, and there was a fire, and all the equipment controlling the Wi-Fi network burned.
It's a supermarket.
Yeah, that's the market at the corner. And there was outrage, and the phones were ringing off the hook. When can we get our Wi-Fi back? So, it's the opposite concern in that it's put in for residential use and recreational use, but it becomes a business utility.
Which brings me to my second question, then. Would Millbrae be liable for any security breaches users might have if they were using the public system?
So, I think the county already has, I can't remember exactly, I want to say, an order of magnitude of 35 to 40 Wi-Fi sites up in various county areas, parks, et cetera. So, there already is language and things in place that limit the liability. I'm not an attorney, so I couldn't address it. I'm sorry?
We have an attorney in my home. Yeah, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
I would just say that these are my questions that, when this comes back to us, I'm in support. When this comes back as a staff report, if they could include some information. My personal computer, my household, is on Kaspersky, which is now linked to the Russian hacking situation, which means I'm a little bit scared. Not that I've got anything anybody cares about, but just security in general. I have a couple more quick questions.
Can we hold the rest of the questions until after the presentation?
Sure.
Okay, let's finish the presentation and get back to questions.
Yeah, and I understand, and I'll be glad to address all your questions at the end. So, this is just a brief slide and drawing on the architecture. So, ideally, we want to use fiber to connect the various access points designated in orange, and the little yellow lightning bolts indicate wireless. So, you can very quickly install wireless by not using any fibers, using wireless connectivity to tie the access points together. It's much lower performing. It doesn't scale very well, and it's much more prone to having issues. So, it's a great way to deploy wireless quickly, but it's not the preferred way if fiber is available. But there's lots of different ways that it can be done. But since it looks like fiber optic is available, we're looking to use that as the infrastructure. So, this is the slide I was referring to earlier. So, the county has committed to providing the access points, the installation services, the controllers, to get everything up and running using Millbrae's connectivity options. It does include currently one-year maintenance, and there'll be discussions on migrating that over to city responsibility. And the county is working on price models to make it clear what the anticipated costs will be going forward on that. So, next steps, I think that Millbrae will benefit from continuing to support SAMCAT and participating in the shared fiber network. It's a great opportunity for Millbrae to connect to other cities in the county, other cities and counties in the state and in the country. With these connectivity, I mentioned the POPs in San Francisco and Palo Alto, you have fiber connectivity to Asia. So, you could set up high-speed networks to any place in the world through this type of connectivity, which is, again, very interesting for some of the things you guys are considering in the future. Another one of the next steps is if everyone is interested in moving forward, I think an RFP should be released to get a cost estimate or to get the fiber installed in the existing conduit. Again, that's a precursor, ideally, for the Wi-Fi network. Investigate the conduit that will tie Broadway and El Camino. I think we talked a little bit, hopefully, clear that there's conduit on Broadway, conduit on El Camino, but we don't have a clear way to connect it to yet. It can be done wirelessly. There's lots of things that can be done, but some investigation should be done on that. And then, I think that continuing to work with the county on the plans to get it installed. If I understand correctly, there's a meeting tomorrow between the City of Millbrae and County IT to actually do a walkthrough and do some initial studies on how to implement Wi-Fi here. And then, I think it's also been brought up that there might be a desire to either improve Wi-Fi here and/or eventually tie it together so there's one Wi-Fi network in the City Councilwoman Schneider?
Sure, Councilman Schneider.
Let me keep on going here.
Thank you, John.
And thank you.
You're welcome.
So, earlier today, you talked about connectivity between Broadway and City Hall. What about connectivity up with the new conduit that's going to be run, or the existing conduit, no, it's being put in, for the new electricity along Taylor Boulevard up to Hazel? And then, on either side of Hazel is the entrance into the rec center. So, I just want to throw that out there as an opportunity, if we're going to dig once...
Yes, my understanding, Millbrae does have a dig-once ordinance. So, whoever's putting conduit in the ground, they're obligated to put in fresh, unused conduit next to it. Again, I think everyone understands, once the street's open, the cost of the conduit's trivial. It's all about opening a street and then repairing.
It seems pretty kismet, given that system's going to run right up to there. I was trying to figure out if this, having more Wi-Fi down here, would help our customers who don't have Comcast or AT&amp;T U-verse, if they've got Dish or some of the other services they can't get, our council meetings. And if the staff report could talk about better public access, I would like to see that in the staff report. What I'm learning in terms of getting grants for bike routes is a lot of that is tied into, is it helping disadvantaged communities? Technically, Millbrae is not a disadvantaged community. That doesn't mean we don't have disadvantaged pockets. And some of our disadvantaged pockets are at our north end. So, they're in the Park and Park area, which is outside the scope of your option one or your option two. I would like us to consider what we might be able to do in running conduit up, all the way up El Camino, and getting it to the Park and Park neighborhood, which I think has the potential to be some amazing family centers in there. It's got lovely wide sidewalks already. If we could get in a nice coffee bar or something else for families, we would have it there. And I think that is the location where we actually have some families who could use that connectivity for their students. It could be down here, too, but up there, I'm more familiar with that.
That is certainly possible. The whole architecture is designed to be modular and extensible. So, you do it this way here, and then you add another piece, add another piece, add another piece, and the rate and the size of the pieces is dependent on the appetite and the funding available to do that.
Well, then, again, if this is a pilot project, that's great, but maybe we can keep an eye on what it might be to bring it up to our northern end. And if San Bruno didn't participate because they were their own cable company, then that might help that whole southern end of San Bruno, too.
So, San Bruno is very interested in participating in the SAMCAT shared fiber network. They understand that it helps their existing infrastructure. It doesn't compete against it.
Okay, and on our north end, we kind of, we cross over in a couple neighborhoods. My last two is I have AT&amp;T U-verse, once this goes in, and I'm two blocks from here, can I get rid of my Wi-Fi connection? Okay, so it's only commercial. Let's make sure that that's really clear when it comes back to us, because I wasn't quite sure.
Right, and that's one of the reasons why we want to make sure it's clear this is a proof-of-concept. We want to be clear on what we can actually accomplish and what we actually offer and how it actually works. We don't want to set unrealistic expectations. I think everyone agrees that you want to have very specific, we're going to do this, we can guarantee that we can accomplish it, and this is what we can expect, and if we get better. If this bleeds over the two blocks to your house, great. I personally wouldn't get rid of my Wi-Fi in my house until you checked it out. But I think that, you know, most people understand how valuable it is to get Wi-Fi, and once it's here and people understand it and appreciate it, it's very normal for it to expand, and then the directions in which you expand it are really decisions of yours.
And very last question. I don't know if anyone here watching on TV watched 60 Minutes a couple of weeks ago where they talked about cellphone technology and how it's plugging into our brains and triggering endorphins. So, I'm wondering if we can also have a couple of unplugged days on this, because if we're going to plug ourselves in, they're actually finding problems with the human brain with this. So, please, don't quote me. Go look at the 60 Minutes study on there. It was actually for some former Google scientist who came out with it.
If it's shut down, they'll just go over to Starbucks and buy Wi-Fi.
Yeah, just maybe one unplugged day a year or something.
Or they'll go to Safeway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Lee?
Yeah, so this is summarized, that we're getting free equipment from the county. And the question for us is how much of this we want to roll out. There is, SAMCAT is presently working on reformulating themselves to be a JPA, meaning that, for the audience at home, that's a joint power authority. That means many cities and municipalities have a voting right on this committee. And the whole purpose is to take advantage of this fiber optic cable and to enhance our ability to provide faster internets to the businesses, because a lot of businesses need it now. Even auto dealerships, they download huge loads of data for schematics for repairing cars, for instance. So, it's a huge economic potential. And also, it's something that's needed for fire and police, because now they're doing a lot of communications through the Wi-Fi. And I think it was mentioned that when the floods were happening in Pescadero, the only way to communicate was through their Wi-Fi connection. So, it's a safety issue. And also, it's a social justice issue, equality issue, because a lot of financially challenged families can't afford fast Wi-Fi. They can't afford...So, a lot of them, actually, the kids go to the library to do their homework. They can't do their work at home, so...
It's actually in San Mateo County, a material number of kids who do their term papers on their phone because it's the only connected device they have. And if you consider that relative to using a computer to type a paper, it's a clear, clear disadvantage.
Yeah, so, and the Wi-Fi would work well with Chromebooks, which a lot of schools are getting for their kids who don't have that advantage. And the Board of Supervisors just decided that they were discussing the possibility of cutting the budget for this program, but they recognize that it is a central part of the infrastructure for the reasons that I've just mentioned. So, they're going to keep it in their budget. They took it off the list to be cut. So, I think that there's a huge potential for Millbrae to not only attract more businesses here, which will increase our tax base, and these are the type of businesses that we want, the ones that come and visit, leave their money, and go home. And in order to not build just housing, but build some office space here, too, which is really needed for, and the opportunity to give them, the businesses really want this type of service. So, I think this is something that is very exciting for us.
Thank you, Wayne. Any other comments or questions from the council? Just one other thing that was mentioned during our tech subcommittee meeting is the connectivity of some of the city facilities is a bit lacking. So, I think that's something else that we're looking at doing is improving. For example, this room does not have a public Wi-Fi network. There is a city Wi-Fi network for City Hall that very few people know the password to. But for these meetings, I don't know the password to it. But, you know, we do have public meetings here, and some of them go several hours, and sometimes we have people in the audience who are here for one topic, and they're waiting and waiting. And it would be valuable to have Wi-Fi here in this room for people to be productive, you know, while meetings are going on. So, I think that's something important also to look into is, you know, not just downtown, but also making sure that all of our facilities, both City Hall, the corp yard, the library has excellent Wi-Fi, but all the other facility facilities are connected as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, John. Now, we move on to council comments. We also do have a closed session this evening, so we try to keep them relatively brief, which seems like I have to say pretty much every meeting, because we've been going late sometimes. But let's start from the left side, Councilwoman Oliva.
What am I going to say tonight? I'm going to say that I bought my plane ticket to Japan, so I will be going on behalf of the City of Millbrae, representing our mayor in a contract for a friendship city with Hanu. So, I just want to give an update on that.
Excellent. Councilwoman Schneider?
Okay, the City Manager already talked about CERT and Silver Dragon, but we had 40 volunteers. One of the interesting things is, for the first time, we were beta-testing a data collection system. So, using iPads and Survey Monkey, we surveyed the number of containers that could be mosquito habitat and actually recorded it, and it went, we had the mosquito abatement biologist with us that day, and that is pretty cool. I will say, for anybody who's still watching this late at night with all the rain we've had, please go and check all of your containers that may even have, even a couple of millimeters of water in it is enough to create habitat for mosquito. The biologist did catch some of the day-biting mosquitoes. This was a test for day-biting mosquitoes, which carry Zika and can carry West Nile. Emergency Operations Council met last week. We did approve the budget for the following fiscal year. Our budget component is going to stay the same. However, the public should be aware that what's happening at the federal level, the budget for the federal level could affect both Homeland Security and FEMA, and that's the money that we eventually get to run drills for emergency operations or to set up for emergency operations. So, what happens at the federal government does have a direct link to us. For the Leos, we have an AWES event coming up on May 6. It'll be in the parking lot right across from City Hall. And finally, I attended the High-Speed Rail Meeting last week in San Mateo. The main lesson that I got from Millbrae is, first of all, they're going to come and do a workshop in Millbrae for Millbrae residents. There were four of us there from Millbrae last week. But if we want to make Millbrae a quiet zone for any of the trains that be coming through, each city has to individually apply to become a quiet zone. Federal law does not allow us to do it as a group effort. And I confirmed that at Progress Seminar last week. And so, I would like to see that we're going through whatever we need to do to make sure that Millbrae is a quiet zone and work with San Bruno and Burlingame. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pappin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick things. I want to alert the Millbrae public to a little speed trap in Burlingame. El Camino, as you go by the airport, I mean, the hospital, there's a nice radar gun that's frequently out. Just for speeders, yes, we all want to be careful, but, you know, when the lanes go from two to three. Also, alert the public to that some of the development projects were mentioned tonight and maybe are going before the Planning Commission, so please be sure to update and look at the Planning Commission agendas. We haven't seen anything yet. look at the Planning Commission agendas, we haven't seen anything yet. And as a final note, I wouldn't normally say this, but I will say this, there's a new movie out called The Promise, which is very good, and all the proceeds go to nonprofits and the refugee situation throughout the world. That's the only reason I'm mentioning it here, and historically speaking, it is an important movie for everyone to remember, called The Promise, so please see it.
Thank you, Gina. Councilwoman, or Councilman Lee?
Transgender change.
Let me translate.
It's 2017, right?
We're all 2017. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'd like to reiterate that the Leos are celebrating their 10th anniversary on May 13th at 6 o'clock, St. Dunston. The guest speaker will be Ms. California and Ms. America Runner-Up, Crystal Lee. If you'd like RSVP by May 4th with John Muniz, and his email's right here, so you can take a look at that. What's that? Oh.
Say that.
Let's see, tomorrow, the vice mayor just handed this to me, there's going to be a sobriety checkpoint tomorrow at Notre Dame Avenue, and it's going to happen Wednesday to April 26th, from 11:00 to 3:00, that's your public.
It's a realistic presentation of a very, very bad accident, in case anybody's driving in the neighborhood.
Yeah, and then, and that was very interesting. Let's see, oh, and this to piggyback on what the vice mayor said about the development, just everybody's been sending emails, we appreciate those. The numbers that has been floating around is not known, we don't know how much money we're going to get from those developments, because the design hasn't been come up for us for discussion. We haven't seen the design, so there is no analysis about how much money we're going to get from any of those developments. So it's all a guess right now, including the amount of housing, affordable housing that's going to be provided, it's all up in the air, we haven't received any, anything up at the city council. And then the CMEC meeting, which is the, the Congestion Management Environmental Quality Subcommittee of the city and counties of Association of Government, CCG, oh my God. The CMEC committee is recommending that CCG approve funding that we received from the state, and Millbrae is currently slated to get $387,000 to rehabilitate some streets, which is different from totally grinding it down, I guess. And so those streets are going to be Larkspurk, from Skyline to Helen, Bayview, from Lamita to Santa Barbara Avenue, that's really, you know, that street needed a long time, Lamita Avenue, from Bayview Avenue to Linden, and Magnolia Avenue. And last week, or last meeting also, I mentioned that we're doing sewer work, and we will be resurfacing additional five streets, so that's welcome news. And then, at the, we had a Progress Seminar, which most of us were able to attend, and the Progress Seminar is basically a conference of San Mateo County city officials and nonprofits working on policy issues that are really, are really taxing for all of us. And one of them was housing. One statistic I just want to mention is that for every 26 new jobs that come out here, we only get one house. So it's one house for every 26 new jobs, so you guys do, you can see how bad that's getting. And, let's see, they were talking about cannabis, and the fact that the vice mayor's touched on that, and it's, they can't use banks, so it's mostly cash, or they're using credit, yeah, mostly cash, and they can't, they don't have a really good way to figure out sobriety tests, because cannabis, they don't have any guidelines for how to measure intoxication due to cannabis. And let's see what else was there, and it's, I think that's the biggest takeaways. And the, at the ABAG, the Associate Bear Governments, the Executive Committee, which I sit on, which coordinates all the trans, housing, basically, and many planning, they're going to be doing a roadshow, and I don't have the specific dates with me, but I'll let you, it's in May, and it's going to be in Redwood City. And there's going to be, basically, they're talking, still talking about the mingling or merging of the MTC, which is the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, with ABAG planning staff, so that's still underway. So, anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Lee. Let's see, this, yesterday, I attended the Millbrae Sister Cities Commission meeting, we discussed the delegation to Hanu, so thank you very much, Councilwoman Oliva, for stepping up to represent the city there. The, some of the commissioners will also be in San Francisco this weekend for the Chileno Festival, that is this Sunday in San Francisco. I also attended the Commute.org board meeting last week, and we discussed this in our previous meeting at 6:00 PM, but we had Mario Rendon, Rendon, from Kevin Mullin's office in attendance, and he gave a presentation on SB1, the State Transportation Infrastructure Bill that was just signed, that will be increasing gasoline taxes and vehicle license taxes for, to improve transportation infrastructure, both for cities and local governments, as well as for state highways. And the figure that we saw was that the City of Millbrae is slated to receive, once this is fully phased in, in the next two years, roughly $800,000, almost $800,000 annually from this SB1, from these new taxes. So I think that's, you know, obviously, we have many people in the, in the City of Millbrae who want us to be investing in our roads, and we're working on that now, but I think we need to start planning now for when we get those funds next year and the next couple of years down the road. Let's see, in closing this evening, we did have a couple of longtime Millbrae residents pass away. Former mayor Paul Van Eiderstein passed away recently. He was on the Millbrae City Council for 18 years, and served four terms as the mayor of Millbrae. He had been living outside of the area, I think in Santa Rosa recently, and just passed away. We also lost Dan Cabadano, who was very active with the Italian Catholic Federation and the Knights of Columbus at St. Dunston's, longtime resident of the City of Millbrae, so I offer our condolences to his wife, Stephanie. So I'd like to close in their honor and adjourn to closed session this evening. Thank you very, thank you very much, have a good evening, everyone.[1601.01]